Good evening and thank you for tuning here tonight with us. We're going to move back into open session, our public portion of the meeting. And first, I just want to say again, thanks to our good friends at GMC Texan for providing the live streaming for other of the meetings. Our good friend, Mr. Rocker, we really appreciate that. And people can watch and even have a later date, you can see it on the website, so that's great. First, we're going to stand and Mr. Ringwald, would you lead us to the floor?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the regent of all.
On to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas. One nation under God, one indivisible.
And Mr. Trump, on the side of the booth. Okay, we do not have any commendations or reconnitions, given that it's an August meeting and students are not back in session or fewer as of our staff. Michelle, are there any patron comments you could make?
No actual commendations.
What would you guess before we go to public comments? So, next.
Two of our very own were selected as Jason learning Argonauts, joining a group of eleven Argonauts nationwide participating in the Long Beach Research Trip off the coast of the Bahamas. Creekwood Middle School student Jake Ballard and Wood Creek Middle School teacher Kevin Hughes worked alongside scientists in this experience. They were also incredibly fortunate to have a Jason learning curriculum in our district, thanks to a generous brand named Ossile like Chevron, referring hands-on, real-world learning and science education to middle school classrooms. Michelle.
The only patron on last day was selected, she is the final representative.
Extremely excited about getting the opportunity to be there and see it because I've always had a passion for love life and just trying to understand them. This really, once I saw it, really interested my attention to actually be able to help them and see what's really going on. I feel great, I'm so excited about this opportunity and what I can share with my kids.
Jason learning, what they do is they, their mission is to create real-world science connections with kids. And so what they do is they have researchers that come in and make videos or even talk with kids about what they're doing in the field and how it's relevant to the world and learning science.
I was more expecting like a real business type thing and not actually, not go out into the real world and actually doing that kind of stuff. I was expecting more like, you know, how the science study for you, you just were part of it, you know, kind of a job to the network. But when I actually got there, it was actually completely different. They actually involved you in every single thing that was, you know, that they did. And you were actually, one of the things that was really going on. One of the, one of my favorite things on the CEO campus was what they call their aqua products lab. So, what it, what it is, is a mix of aquaculture and hydroponics. It was such an amazing experience from the small thing to the big thing, because I'm actually in the mountains snorkeling or to all the top sea turtles. I amazingly helped out with that because it's not a real-world, meaningful science, but I've never come to it. And we lived in a couple of moments with these amazing animals, the action would be like fascinating, really amazing, you know. These things that we're getting rid of, you know, which is, it's beauty for a change. It really made me feel bad because this beautiful animal is a destroyed brother. And to be able to help that, build that in that direction, it took a lot of, it took a lot of, it's in the heart of the people, but it's a DRI, not a school, it's a joint thing. Same with what they have for the environment, for generations to come. It was inspiring.
You know, she was a day-to-day teacher, you know, and I was a day-to-day student. There was nothing quite, you know, amazing about either of our, a lot of it's the one thing we had in common, which made us different, was our love for the earth, our evenness to explore and actually learn. And that made us bond extremely well. We weren't allowed to pick up all the stuff, some of the disturbing stuff, man. That was really hard for Jake, you know, we just, saying everything. But the things that we couldn't pick up, small crowds of, like, little crowds of her crowds and stuff like that, I can remember saying, no, 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 I want to pick this back exactly where I put it, I don't have a story to tell. So, I just, I can't think of the attitude that they could have been from the last day.
Miss Hughes is unable to be with us tonight, but we want to recognize Jake Ballard, who is an eighth grade student from Creekwood, and he will be a freshman at Kingwood High School this year. Thank you. He's here with his future from Creekwood Middle School, Mr. Greg Kinsley. Parents Carrie and Harold Say and Mr. Kelly Ballard. Jake, and we want to thank sponsors like Chevron, they call these possible for all of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Michelle, just to ensure to, are there no patron comments?
Yeah, there's no comments.
Okay, so then we will move to, I know we'll have some comments, is there any comments for the board? And we always send those comments. Let's start with Mr. Ringwald.
Hello, nice to see everybody. First, want to welcome you back, Mr. President. Had a little surgery and you look better than ever.
Thank you.
So, it's good to have you back.
It wasn't cosmetic.
Well, that was in the original statements I was going to make, I couldn't even see the scar line on your face, but I've cut those, so I wouldn't say it. And happy birthday to Mr. Sid, fifty years old yesterday. Happy birthday to you, sir. You look wonderful. Other day, forty-nine, so.
I'm glad it's a slap cry.
That's right. And I want to welcome my family. My family is here, my wife working on the school health advisory council, and we're going to hear a report a little bit later with Ms. Wagner. So, I have my wife Lena and my daughters, Emma and Sydney, they're trying to hide back there. They are the pride of the Creekwood Colt volleyball team, eighth grade and seventh grade. Last year, you and her teammates took district in seventh grade, so we're expecting that same effort in eighth grade. And Sydney will be on the seventh grade volleyball team, so we're excited to have you.
You are, must pay for this.
But I will say, Sydney was, was in a, was it Kingwood Park or Kingwood High School camp, the two and two?
You should know that now.
I think it was Kingwood Park. My wife paid for it, Kingwood High School. Kingwood High School, one of those Kingwood schools. And, and, you know, Mr. President, I don't know if you know volleyball, but you play at twenty-five. And so Sydney started serving at zero to zero and ended serving at twenty-five to zero. So, yeah. We are negotiations with Kingwood Park and Kingwood High School for her services. I can't be bought, her mother cannot be bought, but I can be bought. But it's good to have you guys here tonight, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Conrad, and I just want to say, thank the good Lord that you were able to get your way in between two hurricanes and get back to us.
Yes, I just want to welcome everyone back from their vacation. Hopefully you didn't encounter double threat on your life, I guess, if I got in, what's in a twenty-two-year span, and that and that, so, hey, happy new, congratulations on ONLSC Oregon, I didn't know we had Argonauts, so that's pretty cool. I know that was a great trip and a good experience for you, hopefully you'll be able to share some of the great things that you learned, that you probably already have with Mr. Kinsley. So, it's a great experience, so congratulations, and we're glad to have that program as part of ONLSC. I did want to thank Texan Lab, I neglected to do that last time, for providing the streaming services, so thanks again for the work that you're doing in coordination with our public information department, and for providing our statistics, so we know now that's where what the interest is there. I did want to just take this time to remind everybody, we do have our vision statement displayed on the screen, that our mission, our purpose in partnership with families and community is to develop each child intellectually, artistically, emotionally, scientifically, and socially, so that all students are lifelong learners, complex thinkers, responsible, goal businesses, and effective people. That's a pretty lofty mission, isn't it? As we go about our work for the 2014-15 school year, I just want us to be mindful of that, and whether we're drafting a policy or updating handbook or changing the student schedule or grading papers or communicating with parents, we want to make sure that all of our work is about creating the right conditions for our students to grow and for us to achieve that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Mr. Rush.
No, no comments this evening.
Okay, Mr. Scotty.
No comments, Mr. Rush.
Yeah, thank you. Who's there for that?
Just want to tell everybody that this is the, I guess, my son says this is the worst time of the year since miserably hot, and schools running, but it's a board before, I'm excited, school's about to start, I think, and it's exciting, and just a couple of weeks. They have kids back at school and everybody's ready to go, just like I said, I feel like great school year, and I will look forward to, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cindy.
Well, I was going to say, no comment, because several other people did too, but that wouldn't be in my nature. But I'll be brief, and that wouldn't be in my nature. But Emma and Sydney, my kids love you all to death because y'all show up here and get embarrassed by your dad, so that gives them excuse to never show up to a school board meeting, so they appreciate y'all taking one for the pain. Jake, how was the trip? That looked like it was awesome. I was, saw a couple dragonfish on the, on the video there, and just so happened, I was watching, I'm a big shark, and I was watching Shark Week, and a little tidbit for all of us, you'd walked away here saying that you learned something and that I actually added value. The dragonfish is the most productive fish in the ocean, as scientists predict.
Are you, are you a lionfish?
Why, is it lionfish? But it was on Shark Week last night, so. I got the wrong, I got the wrong one, but it's in the picture. So, that's why I read books with pictures, because I recognize the picture, I just don't get the names right, so, but I'm glad you were able to make that trip and represent ONLSC, that's all I have.
Are you sure? Thank you, Mrs. Cindy. Your loss. I appreciate it. I'll keep it brief, I just also want to, I didn't do it to start with me, I just wanted to welcome Mr. Fundenberg, who is here from City Council of Hubble. Thank you for being here, appreciate that, he's one of our very often participants here, we appreciate that. And also, just wanted to say, and I know we all saw this, to thank our PTA council, they were awarded the achievement at the goal level for outstanding PTA councils across the state. That's great, and this for 2013, fourteen, and all you guys know what a great job that all of our PTAs and PTOs do, and the council kind of steering that whole thing, so hats off to them, great, great job. And Ms. Conrad, obviously, you said you didn't know about Jason's program, so I guess you haven't had a chance to read the your school's board article yet. Well, they are, well, it was mentioned in that article, so, okay, anyway, but anyway. She's been in white, yes, she's, Jason, okay, well, thank you again, and we will move on now with the situation on our agenda. And Ms. Conrad, I ask, would you please give us? I'm sorry. Yes, then, I'm sorry, we, we do, and, and obviously, Dr. Skondo is not saying this evening, Dr. Price is. Dr. Skondo was called away last minute, and Dr. Price, I'm sorry, I apologize for not turning, I ask very well for comments, please go ahead.
I have no comments.
Well, thank you, Ms. Young. And I was, I was on a roll, too, I was kind of like hitting the, all right, we'll go to some of those dragonfish, yes, pointing that out, Jake, see, that makes us so proud, we can see them there, and they speak up and let us know.
Mr. President, as to the proposed settlement agreement in the matter of Food Armstrong versus ONLSC, PA docket zero eight zero, order two zero eight four zero, I mean that in accordance with board policy, PA and legal, board insurance and settlement agreement in the matter of Food Armstrong versus ONLSC, PA docket.
Thank you.
Father authorize superintendent to expedite the settlement.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. President, as to the minutes, I move that board approved the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in the document.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Extention.
Yes, right. Yes. Okay, Ms. Conrad, would you please provide a motion on the minutes?
Mr. President, as to the minutes, I move that board approved the regular board meeting held on July first, 2014.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Extentions? Next on our agenda is update on board associations and committees. I will start with the audit committee, Mr. Scotty, any report?
Thank you, Mr. President. We don't have a report for today, but I heard a report that we will be meeting on September ninth, audit meeting, and going over some of the stuff, we're going to be meeting today, our external auditor, we can, we'll review all of that, information, we'll also look at our safety school offices, which are coming up in the first week, forty-two campuses. So, that's what I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, board and superintendent evaluation?
Next week is board superintendent evaluation process, and we'll be celebrating together for quite a bit, as you guys know, and that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. President. We are just, I'm sorry, take a five-minute recess, session, and we will be back. Because I'm going to go back to Mr. Ringwald with building planning.
Building planning, we had a great meeting last Thursday, thank you, Dr. Price, for your efforts. We'll let, let you know, and we had a good meeting, mainly discussed land purchase, which I think people already received from Dr. Skondo, and lots and lots of summer projects, over two hundred different projects. As I think you recall, not one of them is going to be delayed, well, people delayed enough a major, yeah. So, that was the main, a couple of things we talked about, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. Finance committee, we have no report for this evening. Legislative and, I was going to say legislative, Matt, some other, still for us.
Legislative committee, we have our first work committee meeting, August the sixth, Tuesday. Goal of that meeting is to plan for the first district-wide legislative committee, those of you that, about this time two years ago, in this room, I know somebody participated in that, so I'll be on the lookout for invitations, like to all the community in this process as we head into the 2015 legislative session. If anyone's interested, make sure you're on that invite list, you can see myself repaying at the end of this meeting, make sure you have your contacts involved. As far as advertising and marketing committee, we have a meeting this evening, so we'll do this soon, so we're not here all night, but to review some initial data that we requested as a committee to come first, we will work this year.
Next is, Ms. Smith, Congresswoman.
Well, as you all know, we have a workshop on Thursday night to discuss all the things that we've been working on for the last year. Dr. Price and Ms. Atwood have put together a good program with some of the auditors that have been working with us, and we'll be looking at some of the program three-year plans as well, so there'll be a lot of information in a short period of time, and a lot of things for you all to take home and kind of read and internalize and make notes, make, write down any questions that you want us to pursue after that workshop.
Thank you, sir. Next, Ms. Conrad, technology, data, government.
Not going to rush your report, we did meet previously, last week, week before.
Week before, yes.
Week before last. Just got an update on some of the summer projects, Kentucky Energy Services, Mr. Ali has reported on your progress, and we'll be meeting again on September second. I want to share with you.
Thank you. Mr. President, do you have any?
Yeah, we have some meetings coming up.
All right, take us through that section of our agenda, I'm sorry. And now we're going to move to the consent agenda. Ms. Conrad, would you please track along, please, so we can track a little bit. First, under learning considerations and purchases, interlocal contract for consulting services. Consent. Library books and publications. Consent. The JJAEP memorandum of understanding on governance considerations, item A. Consent. B, interlocal agreement regarding the ISD for DAEP services. Consent. Item C, naming a Tott State High School softball field. Okay, that's individual. Item D, resolution to suspend portions of policy EIE local. That's consent. Number E, proposed revisions to policy EHPP local. It's also consent. Item F, CASB policy update ninety-nine. Consent. Item G, proposed revisions to policies CE local, CH local, and CV local. It's also consent. Okay, under financial services considerations and purchases, item A, tax refund. Consent. Waiver of principal and interest. That's consent. Item C, removal of tax accounts from delinquent tax law. That's consent. Item D, resale properties. That's consent. Item E, budgetary amendments. That's a pull, or individual. And the next, that's, and the next section, support services considerations and purchases, we have one item, A, generator maintenance and repair services. That is also consent. Okay, Ms. Conrad, would you please move those back to us in a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the board approve following items by consent, under learning, items A and B. Under governance, items A, B, D, E, F, and G. Under finance services, items A, B, C, and D. And under support services, item A.
Mr. Rush, a second? All those in favor? Seven years. All right, well, thank you very much. Okay. Normally, we would continue and go back to our agenda, but I'm going to ask the diligence of my colleagues if they would mind us going out of order on one item, and that is a report under section three. Governance reports and considerations, I'll do that. Oh, I'm sorry, under F. Okay, and the only reason I ask that is, Mr. Roseman's here from Purdue Brandon, he's going to give us a report on delinquent tax report, and I just thought, as deference to his time, we can let him kind of go ahead of the other reports we have, and only the items that will be voted on as individuals. So, Mr. Roseman, you have the floor.
My name is Dennis Simple, I'm the district success collector, and every year, on July first, the district turns over all their delinquent property tax accounts to our delinquent tax attorneys, which is the firm of Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and ONLSC. And tonight, we have two of their attorneys that we're very closely with, Mr. Donnie Roseman and Mr. Greg East, are here to present their annual tax collection report.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Mr. President, my name is the board, Dr. Price, patrons and supporters of the district. For those of us at Purdue, Brandon, and Fielder, Collins, and Mont, we are pleased to be here at the end of one late tax collection year and at the start of another, depending what is coming and before. We really value our relationship with the district and the partnership we've created, and wanted to express that. I'm going to hit a couple of hot points, and then Greg is going to give you a lot more detail.
I'm going to.
So, basically, out of one hundred and seventy-one million dollars, the levy with twenty thirteen tax, we are given two point five million to collect, which is one point four eight percent. The significance of that is, seven or eight years ago, and there's another slide that I will show you in a minute, that number was over four million dollars, when your levy was a hundred and twenty million dollars. So, as your levy has gone up, your taxpayers have continued to pay and improve the percentage of payment for it sort of. That's great for the district, not so great for us, but we're happy to be here. Greg, if you want to skip ahead to page six.
It's very indicative of a great job, something to do, and they're paid and paid up, and just tremendous.
It is tremendous, and it's reflective of the partnership that we have with the tax office. Part of the reason I think your collections are better besides the change in the economy is that the taxpayers in Ullman, I think, know that the board is serious about collecting your local taxes, that everyone should share their burden to the extent that they're required to, and that if you're going to have to pay your taxes, it's cheaper to pay it before they turn over to us than to wait for the lawyers to get it. So, your public has become educated, if they weren't before. This chart basically shows the collection percentages going back to two thousand and eight, on July one. So, this year, the tax office had collected ninety-eight point fifty-two. In two thousand and eight, the number was ninety-six point seven. It just reinforces the numbers I was talking about. And then the next chart, Greg, if you would. This is basically the amounts that are turned over to us. Starting in two thousand and eight, it was over four million dollars, and so that trend is there. When we got hired by the district, we joked that our goal was to work ourselves out of the job. I didn't mean it. But this trend doesn't look good for us, it's great for the district. We do appreciate our relationship once again, and I'm with Greg to do the rest of the report. Thank you very much.
All right. This is page three. This is the current tax year, twenty thirteen, that were just turned over to us. As part of our work, we code accounts to organize yourselves and keep staff working on the right accounts. So, the biggest section are just accounts that have no code on them, because it's just a normal account that the staff is trying to collect. And there's about six percent that we have with bad addresses. We periodically go through until we find a new address, we check its title, see if ownership has changed, that kind of thing. And there's seven percent in litigation already. We have under seven percent in partial payment agreements, and you have about ten percent under over sixty-five with disability deferrals. Given a deferral, taxes are due, but the district can't fulfill its lien, and we just don't try to collect and get out of our money. And the taxpayer can keep the deferral as long as the property is their homestead, and then when it's not, a lot of it is unpaid, but we don't work on our sin letters or do any kind of collecting. This is status votes for all tax years, so thirteen and everything's fire. The biggest section still collection pending, because that includes all the twenty thirteen taxes. And so, there's much bigger group of litigation, all our current pending lawsuits, and the bigger atomic in bad addresses. But there's a lot of the accounts that we don't sue on, because we identify them as properties that probably struck off to the district and would not be able to resell. We try to avoid suing on anything we don't think we're going to be able to sell, unless we have a buyer come to us and say, I, you know, that store I would buy it, but we don't mind suing on it. But we try to avoid something that's going to strike off to us and say, struck off. That's unusual. This is the amount of base tax for all years. Of course, the big sections, twenty thirteen, and then twenty twelve, and it's over time. We keep working on the old years. The first couple of months, we concentrate on working on the twenty thirteen taxes. It's only one year due, and it's usually easier to collect one year and collect, work on a two thousand dollar problem, instead of waiting two years and the taxpayer has a forty-five hundred dollar problem. But we'll solve that for a couple of months, and start reporting reports for all years, and see where we're at. And since we've said that's now, and people are calling in for every challenge anyway, so we end up working on them through phone calls, and then we'll start making outgoing calls over the years, starting in two weeks. This shows how much it's selective of each current tax year, the first year we work on, the most recent year is twenty twelve, on the right. And usually, we want to be around seventy percent, so we're, and now, for July, we're at sixty-nine point eight, something else to check. So, all practices is where you want to be. And once in a while, if we have a bad, if something happens, and there's a big bankruptcy or something like that, and it's going to be less, we haven't had that kind of problem here, fortunately. And this just shows the progress over time for different tax years. That's the twenty-eight taxes. Usually, we go to around ninety percent, that's pretty much where you stay. There's always the counts that we're not going to work on, because we think it's properties that have to sell, and different things like that, or probably identified underwater, that kind of thing. Around ninety percent, that's where that will be. This is two thousand and nine, it's almost eighty-eight percent after four years. Two thousand and ten at eighty-five. Eleven, almost eighty, and then two thousand and twelve, that we just finished the first couple of months of collection. And that is the report.
Well, thank you very much. Colleagues, questions?
No questions. Thank you for, thank you for all you do every year, you're always there for us, there for our education foundation, for our county. Thank you.
Really, really do. All right. Thank you. Brent, that's right. Before you step away, I wanted to make sure you, you did a great job for us as a vendor, and we appreciate all of that, the great work you do, but also as a partner, we do appreciate your support. We're glad we're able to, thank you. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Okay. Now, we're going to get back into the quarter. We're going to go back to Section One, learning report considerations and purchases. And while there's no action on it, we do have some reports. And, Ms. Atwood, a few things to leave us off with, the state accountability system of two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, this is going to be very short tonight, because most of the information that will normally be presented in support, and pastors will come out at once. You've been getting different pieces of this since June, that the state would release small portions of it. And really, what this is, is about what is the most recent thing. It really comes down to what the state releases on Friday, August eighth. What is different this year than previous years is that there are two systems of accountability that have been used to evaluate campuses and districts this year. One is what we call the state-defined system, it's the index system that you're used to getting the reports on. It's heavily weighted on the state assessments, it's either rated as net improvement or improvement required. And then there's this year, what is called, what we're calling the locally-defined system. This is the system that was about community and student engagement. It was enacted as part of House Bill Five, passed in June of two thousand and thirteen. And what that bill does say is that we must evaluate in nine areas every campus in the district. There are no criteria prescribed by the state, it is left for the districts to determine the criteria for each of those nine areas, and to work with the community to reflect what the community values in those areas. So, let's look at the state system, the state-defined system. And you may recall, this time last year, you saw a similar graphic as this, that had the different indices. Index one, student achievement, which essentially is about students passing. Index two, about student progress, about growth year over year. Index three, about closing performance gaps, and remember, this is not about gaps between students, but gaps towards the standard. And four, on post-secondary readiness, those things that might be indicators of students being prepared to pursue other interests after, after high school. I know it's very difficult, probably, to see, but there are some areas that are shaded in pink on here, and these pink areas indicate areas that are new to the system that were added in this year. Most significantly, what's really happened is every form of test that is given by the state to every student across the district, in every language and every level, is included in some way in the system. Previously, English language learners were excluded in the first year, they are definitely, they are included in every, every woman who's missing this year, as well as there's a difference in index three as far as the final level three performance being double-weighted, and then post-secondary readiness indicators. High schools in the districts were evaluated in four areas, while elementary and middle schools were evaluated in one. So, when you look at this, you can say, well, what are the, what are the cut scores, if you will, what did you have today? From a district's perspective, the target for index one was fifty-five, and from the district's perspective, the target for index four was fifty-six. The second and third index were ranked as a fifth percentile, you had to be above the fifth percentile. It's, it's very similar for elementary, middle schools, and high schools, in that, when you think about those percentile rankings in particular, it's all districts were ranked, and then it's the fifth percentile for districts. All elementary schools were ranked, and it's the fifth percentile for elementary, likewise for middle schools, and likewise for high schools. The differences are that there were, so there were different cut scores for each one of them. High schools, please remember, this year were not evaluated on index two, because there were significant changes in the testing system, namely, the revamping completed their English one and English two system, so they could not do the measure of what. So, we've got a lot of differences from year to year, and some indices applied plenty of, but not the other two. So, if we look at, how did we measure up as a district? Ullman, Penn, and School District exceeded each one of the standards as determined as the threshold for meeting expectations and to be rated as met standard. Indeed, all of our campuses also exceeded the individual thresholds that they have for each index, and have been rated as met standard. The graphic here depicts how the district rated when compared to the state and the region. And as you can see, the district rated above the state and above the region for index ones, index three, and index four, we were even with the state on index two. The number of values that are given down here are what the actual cuts ended up being, or the lines represented for each of our indices for districts, and again, those were different when we look at elementary, middle schools, and high schools. So, that was the state-defined system, and how we fared on that. We also had our locally-defined system. And if we think about our locally-defined system, these are the nine areas that we were asked to rate every campus, as well as the district, do that locally, and then report it to TEA in June, and then TEA will release all of the ratings as districts rated each campus in district across the state in October. So, each one of those areas had to be rated as either unacceptable, acceptable, recognized, or exemplary, and then impossible rating. The only one that is different is the compliance with statute for department, that was a simple yes or no, you either are, or you are not. So, how do we go about doing this, and why do we go about doing it? It really is, we wanted to make sure that we provided an inclusive process that really looked at what does our community value in this, and what are the expectations for our students in preparing them for their future, in areas not included in state assessment. So, the areas that were evaluated in the way in which they were evaluated were exclusive of any state assessment. So, what I can say is that there was a structure put in place that included an oversight committee, nine subcommittees that involved over one hundred representatives from across the community, and included parents, community members, teachers, administrator, office professional staff, support staff from across the district. They worked on a very aggressive timeline to actually look at each one of these indicators, define what they would need, what areas you would use. This is just one sampling of, you know, what the individual rubric and scorecard looked like, if you will, and what were the criteria for each one of the thresholds, and unacceptable, acceptable, recognized, and exemplary. Then, through a iterative process going back between the oversight committee, subcommittees, campus administration cabinet, also working in collaboration with other districts and other professional organizations across the state, to finalize those rubrics, evaluate each campus, and then put it together to come up with an overall of its rubrics, and report it to the state by June. So, what ends up happening is you have individual campuses, how they were individually rated, and then they contribute into the district rating. Okay, so, at this point, all of this information has been posted to the district and campus websites, so that it is publicly available, and as I said, TEA will be releasing this information across to all the, of all districts and campuses across the state in October. The group that worked on this development process is now also in the process of reevaluating each one of these indicators, each one of the thresholds, looking to see what new indicators, what should the thresholds be for this year, and communicating those with campus principals, so that they know what they're being evaluated on at the very beginning of the year, not as we had to basically build the process in the same time, and we're trying to evaluate them because of the time on the record in this year. So, when we look at this, you can always say, and look at, of the state setting, the locally-defined rating system, and what did they really tell us? So, what is the outcome? The outcome is, well, it gives us a snapshot, one picture, of where we are in the district in each one of these areas. There are data points that inform us about our current status, and provide us a perspective of the how, why, and what we do to provide the best education possible for our students and their future. They help us, as we move forward in every dimension of our work, to evaluate what, how, when, where, all of those things, to make informed decisions. We continue to review our programs, we continue to work on the development of instructional leadership, revise and focus our curriculum, so that it's consistent and aligned, as well as looking at curriculum that has provides rigorous instruction and assessment that's relevant to students, because what we're preparing for is for their future. And those really are just the data points.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Conrad?
Sorry. Just for, just to make sure I understand. On the, the committee developed the scorecards, yes, in the research, and then it has a data source, and then he would collect the data, so whoever was responsible for collecting that data came back and brought it to the committee, and the committee did the scoring for each campus?
It was, it was, it was a collaborative effort, and yes, there was this matter, we had the committee that determined the status. The scoring went back and forth, and it was not a once-and-done process. So, while there were pieces that campuses, and what she's referring to are these far ranking columns as far as on this particular slide on these areas, for each of the nine areas, once it was all gathered together, it was, it was a matter of between the oversight committee and the campus administrator, because really, it's the campus administrator whose name is associated with it, but also within their team, to go back and review and make sure. We found that some of these pieces where campuses had to evaluate themselves and provide it, some campuses were very generous, and some were very harsh on themselves. And what we tried to do with working with the oversight committee and with those, those camp...
Sorry. Just to make sure I understand. On the, the committee developed the scorecards, yes, in the room, and then it has a data source, and then he would collect the data. So, whoever was responsible for collecting that data came back and brought it to the committee, and the committee did the scoring for each campus?
It was, it was, it was a collaborative effort, and yes, there was this matter, we had the committee that determined the status. The scoring went back and forth, and it was not a once-and-done process. So, while there were pieces that campuses, and what she's referring to are these far-ranking columns as far as on this particular slide on these areas, for each of the nine areas, once it was all gathered together, it was, it was a matter of between the oversight committee and the campus administrator, because really it's the campus administrator whose name is associated with it, but also within their team, to go back and review and make sure. We found that some of these pieces where campuses had to evaluate themselves and provide it, some campuses were very generous, and some were very harsh on themselves. And what we tried to do with working with the oversight committee and with those campuses is to make sure we had good, clear understanding and consistency across. Every attempt was made to try to provide a very consistent process across campuses so that, no, it wasn't just, you know, whatever you say will take. And campuses where they evaluated, they had to provide supportive documentation as well. The things that were pulled centrally, of course, those were the things that are exist within our system, you know, the numbers, the research.
You may have mentioned some of those. It had to do with a rural community. How does community apply in this process?
We basically, we worked with, when we said the oversight committee, we identified those people in the district, first of all, districts who lead those. And so, like in fine arts, we looked for our fine arts director to basically put that up. We looked for our C P E director to kind of initiate. We solicited for them. They have sometimes, many of them have committees and groups that they work with, that they solicit input and actually members from there. We also went to the individual campuses through the campus leadership and asked for volunteers within it. If we knew we had somebody who was particularly active, whether you want to talk about a booster club or within the G T parent group, you know, spokespeople for those types of groups, we approached them also about being members of this committee. And we even had some board members on some of these committees. Our health and wellness committee in particular, a lot of that was part of the SHAC committee, and that's the representatives of all of us. We're always looking for new members, and as we go forward this year in reviewing and evaluating it, there is, there is a, let me say solicitation. It sounds like an inappropriate word to be using, but it is the appropriate word through, you know, advertisement through email blast district website, also of approaching other community organizations to receive the different, different input overall.
So, I was just gonna ask you, I remember Dr. Caso a couple months back, providing, so I need to ask the question in terms of the makeup for this real world committee. How many people were on the?
There were a hundred people at least on the committee, plus some other district leadership people as well. So, you look at the actual subcommittees, there were a hundred people.
And of that, from, as I care, Paul, how many were non-district people that were in that?
Non-district? I don't really have a number for basically, non-district of a hundred members of it. Fifty-three percent of them had, were parents of students who had not afforded them a school.
Okay, sir. All right, that's, that's all I wanted to do. Okay. Just curious, especially since this is really driven, it's supposed to be the community's input, their perceptions of what's going on.
And, and as we all know, that what our community will demand or will want will change over time as well. We'll just have to always be able to make those changes in the next, so we will reflect community and community values.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Continuing along with our agenda, we have another report on one of my favorite reasons we get to see her at least once a year, come to the boardroom. Ms. Wagner is going to give this report on, as we just mentioned, the School Health Advisory Council, by their name is SHAC. And, Dr. Price, I have a question for you in relation to this. I don't know, Ms. Wagner, if you'll hit this, but can you tell me, Dr. Price, if you'd rather wait till we look for presentation? It had to do with one of the curriculum suggestions that came out of the committee. Go through your report first? Okay, let's do that. Let's go through this.
I think, I think I might be able to answer that. Well, good evening, members of the board and from the cabinet. I'm Helen Wagner, the facilitator of our district's School Health Advisory Council and Elementary Physical Education and Fitness Assessment Coordinator for the district. I'm here this evening to give you a detailed report on the council's activities, the district's wellness policy, and information on some new and innovative programming concerning the health and wellness of our students, staff, and communities. Last year, the district's SHAC members filled out a self-assessment survey and targeted the following items as goals set to achieve this past school year. That was included in your packet, but for the audience as well, I'm going to go ahead and highlight those. Those were our goals that we set. Our first goal was to create and adopt bylaws, completed and approved. We, that, that was our first line of business, and we now have a true set of bylaws in place for our community. We wanted to form a subcommittee to review, and if need be, recommend updated materials as part of our healthy sexuality unit. And a subcommittee was comprised of administrators, teachers, parents, and community members. We studied, reviewed, and recommended updates to teach students about goal-setting, health in relationships, refusal skills, and character building. Another goal was to form a subcommittee, yes, per House Bill Five, ten eighteen directive to increase physical education and fitness in the district. We basically sprung off of our SHAC committee for this, for that House Bill Five, this scorecard committee that Carol had mentioned previously. Most of our people that were on that scorecard committee, oversight committee, they came from the SHAC, because our SHAC has to be comprised of, that's in our bylaws now, at least fifty percent membership must be parents of students in the district and that are not employed by the district. So, we did form a subcommittee, and they helped to create the P E wellness section of the campus and district's scorecard with a great emphasis on physical education, fitness assessment, mental health and counseling, and student health services. So, we encompassed many areas in health and wellness. Our last goal was to promote community involvement in school health issues. And this year, several health fairs were held in the district promoting community partnerships that address health issues, as well as provide information about numerous resources in our area in Harris County. Also, for the first time, Ullim ISD extended an invitation to Westlake Houston, Y M C A, after-school program directors and their staff to attend a day of training with our elementary physical educators on our coordinated school health program, C A H. And that was very successful because those folks come into our schools, and they provide after-school care at every one of our campuses. So, we decided it would be a great partnership with them to invite them to be part of our C A H program, and what we're teaching the students during the day to kind of extend some of those concepts into the after-school program as well.
Mr. President, ask the question. Yeah, sure. So, those after-school programs are in every elementary school, I believe, an after-school program?
Yes.
So, did you get, what percent of participation did you get?
I had their program directors and their site directors. I probably, they did not send one from every single school that's a site director. They had people that oversee certain areas of the district. There were five in attendance, and they were, they were very appreciative of being connected with us. And that was something that was brandy this year that we brought up at the place, so we were pretty proud of those, those actions. So, once again, every goal that was set by our council was met, and I consider that quite an accomplishment. Every year, our campuses complete a wellness policy, and that's as per our federal nutrition guidelines. And this year, I know that you have that in your packet, so you can see that I created a different document. I put red arrows on there indicating areas of where we moved that needle up, indicating improvements, possibly where the needle dropped to show that we needed to have some improvement in certain areas. And a black check mark was in there indicating that we stayed the same in that area. One thing that we also added as part of their rating this year is they needed to give us commentary, because we felt like they could give us that rating of exemplary or recognized, but what got you there? Please give us some feedback. And our feedback was wonderful. It gives us great direction in some of our programs ahead with next year. And one area under component two, which is physical activity, education goals and guidelines, which is one B, it says, "Schools will encourage classroom teachers to provide short activity breaks between lessons or classes." There was quite a bit of feedback regarding that guideline and a need for more brain breaks and activity breaks throughout the school day. Now, maybe you're beginning to make a connection with what I put in your hands earlier this evening. When researching this topic, this slide says it all.
Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
Does it ask a question?
I have a question. I'll go back up, this is touch.
Okay.
All future food and beverage contracts shall consider the nutritional value of products. Do you see that?
I do, I do. And I-
And we got rid of Chick-fil-A's, Dr. Price. You know, we had, there's initiative by, what is the national number figure? It's trying to feed our kids Chick-fil-A foods. So, my, my point is that kids, what they found is that kids aren't eating it, and they're going to class hungry, and that's causing them not to learn because they don't want to eat that stuff. Are we, are we just having some balance, or at least making sure the kids are willing to eat what they're throwing at them? Are we just, are we just basically saying, no, it's got to be nutritional. We don't care if kids starve or not? Because the primary reason why we have, you know, we're educating these kids is so they get information so they have, not to make sure they have a good lunch. I mean, yes, we want to make sure they have nutritional lunch, that's balanced, but that doesn't mean that we can't have Chick-fil-A or something like that. There should be choices. So, what is your response to that?
I will tell you that I'm going to defer that one to our child nutrition directors because they are directly involved with what the guidelines are that they must follow, the federal guidelines.
So, why is this part of your-
It is part of the wellness policy. And so, when we splinter this out to different departments, as you can well see, it's not all physical activity. We also have our mental health services and counseling service in there. We have our student health services, which Ms. Leepold oversees that section. It is very cumbersome in its entirety, the whole document. So, I don't, I don't set those standards. I don't make those standards. I do follow the direction of our child nutrition directors, and they are very well up to date with that. There will be, I know that you all have heard about the smart snacks in schools that Shirley has been telling you about. It more and more will be coming out, but I really don't feel too comfortable answering those questions.
Okay. I don't appreciate that, Helen. So, I do, I do not know if you're on the spot. So, I apologize for that. Just, this is one of my little pet peeves. I'm starting to call it the hunger games, because that's what we do for our kids. So, we look, you know, it's not your daily life, and it's not your-
And part of, part of our physical activity piece and our coordinated school health does deal with nutrition education. That's what the C A H program, that is a piece of it. And so, when we are educating the kids on the foods to eat, the go-slow and whoa foods, and I know if you've had children at the elementary level, they're very well aware of those terms, we do educate the kids on proper nutrition, good go foods to eat that are healthy for them, and how to prep them, how to search for them out in their grocery stores. So, I can say, I can speak very well to that aspect of it, but the actual guidelines of what is allowed to be sold is not really in my, in my reading this all.
I can add just a second here, I'm sorry. But, but I'm curious, because part of nutrition is just not only what we consume, but how we consume it, and our research indicates that it's more healthy for us to eat more frequent meals throughout the day. So, how are we addressing those types of things in our day-to-day activities at school? Because we have athletes who have classes throughout the day. They should be replenishing those nutrients to their bodies, not waiting until one o'clock lunch and things like that. It seems to be kind of inconsistent from campus to campus, what's allowed there in terms of getting snack and stuff like that. What kind of feedback has gotten?
I think I can add a little bit to that. At our elementary level, we have a morning snack. It's called our catch break. And that is instituted, now, what time of the day is up to each campus and when they encourage that. But that is to kind of give them that boost, that brain boost that they need at mid-morning when they start to run out of energy and nutrient and fuel for the body. So, I know that we are instituting that, and that is working across the district very successfully. The classroom teachers are very helpful in that and sending lists home at the beginning of the school year, what types of food snacks are encouraged to bring to, you know, not hot cheetos, you know, things like that. We give them a nice list, and the teachers have worked on it. So, that's part of our coordinated school health program. I can speak to that with them. Elementary level, as far as middle schools and high schools, I know Troy might go to answer that a little more directly. I know kids are hydrated and encouraged to hydrate throughout the day. I have had a child that's gone through the athletic program as well, as you say. They are definitely making sure those kids stay hydrated throughout the day so that when they get to practice, they're not in dehydrated state before they start.
I would agree that they're getting that during that time period, is when they, you know, they return to class and not, not allowed to have a, you know, for some of the work they're doing.
Ms. Card, let me ask, because at elementary, you see all the time because of the campuses, the kids are having snacks this morning, what happened here, and that seems to work pretty well for the real guys. Dr. Price, could you make a note of that to, in terms of Ms. Conrad's question about, do we have any set policies at the middle school and high school levels where the students, you know, obviously, different ages, you know, different types of environments as far as what their nutritional needs might be on a elementary classroom where it's really easy because most part they happen all day. It's easy to get to. So, if you could make a note on that one, we can do that.
So, back to my brain. So, when, when I started researching this topic, there's a slide up here, you can see it pretty much, it says it all. We've talked about the nutritionalized text just now, but movement is vital. You can see that this is an average composite of twenty students' brains taking the same test after they're sitting quietly, and that's the brain on the left-hand side, or a twenty-minute walk. You can see how the brain lights up. The neurons are firing. Learning is much more conducive after a brief walk. You can clearly see that when a human sits for longer than about twenty minutes, the physiology of the brain and body changes. Gravity begins to pool blood into the hamstrings, robbing the brain of the needed oxygen and glucose of brain fuel. The brain essentially falls asleep when you sit for too long. Moving and being active stimulate the neurons that fire the brain. So, as part of our summer staff development, we will be encouraging spurts of movement throughout our students' days. So, as a reminder of this initiative, I've given each of you a brain stress ball to take back to your places of work or home, and let it be a symbol and a reminder to you that you have been sitting for long periods of time to get up and move. As a follow-up from last year, our elementary physical education teachers implemented using edutforya for lesson planning and sharing best practices. I know, Ms. Conrad, you had asked us about that last year, and we put that clearly into place this year. So, lesson planning is happening, and we're sharing those best practices across the district. Also, for the first time, our physical educators, coaches, and adaptive P E teachers, this was quite an undertaking, K through twelve, we shared a day of learning to support the district goal of writing across the curriculum. By the end of this session, an action plan from each vertical team was developed and will be implemented this school year. So, it was the first time that we had an opportunity for all of the P E teachers and coaches to actually meet and work together on a specific initiative. Our district will be upgraded to fitness grade ten, which is a web-based version that was funded by the eighty-third legislature, Texas Legislature, and all students in grades three through twelve that are receiving physical education credit will be assessed annually. In closing, I want to give an accommodation to many of our schools that participated in this year's Jungle for Heart or Boots for Heart. They raised ninety thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars district-wide. That's quite, quite a feat. And our district also raised twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars as part of the American Heart Association Heart Law Division as well. So, I believe it's very evident that many of us are working hard in promoting healthy lifestyles for our students, staff, families, and communities in our ISD. And thank you all, and to all of the SHAC members that are here this evening for their continuing efforts in striving to make healthy vanilla in our district.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Just doing what I do every day, I completely have a message to what you're doing, or doing and accomplishing, or, I put you on the spot last time, I was going to give it this year. Do you ultimately feel supported with your initiatives by this district? Is there anything that's more immediate and further to ensure that you are?
I do feel good support. I feel as though this committee has grown in the last four years. It is extremely representative of all facets and areas of our district. It's a great group of people that are working together to recommend good changes and things for our students. So, yes, I do feel supported. I know that every time I do come and face this board annually, it is one of my most enjoyable evenings as well because I am able to stand up, I'm not taking credit, but I am surely here to tell you about the hard work and efforts of these people that give am surely here to tell you about the hard work and efforts of these people, they give of their time and energy there. So I thank you.
Would this be an appropriate time for Dr. Price to address your question?
Yeah, I, I was gonna get to that right now. And the question I have, Ms. Wagner, the question I have, Dr. Price, is I understand, and I received, I'm sure the board members have too, the SHAC committee has worked very hard and long on the new sex ed curriculum. And they had presented it, and I believe, I remember the facts right, at the end of the year, I think it was in the April timeframe. And I'm just having trouble understanding why we haven't moved forward with that after all of their efforts and they were comfortable with it. And one thing I had heard as a reason was, well, it was the same as some other district that put something in place and they had to pull it back. But I understand that's not the case. So I just wanted to ask, from your advantage point, why are we not there if that's what these folks are charged with and we're not using their recommendations? Or why aren't, I guess that's the question.
And I'll take responsibility. You asked me to put in consistent implementation of curriculum and development and this is a little bit different than what we've done with what is now, uh, what we've done and what we've done is we've taken our past work, we've worked with practitioners, we've worked on writing, developing, we have a lot of free package, a list of free packages. And what we've done in the past, we let people who are actually teaching it, look at it, develop it, make some recommendations. I respect everything the SHAC committee has done, they've done a lot of work with it. But I want to, especially with something that is sensitive, I wanna make sure it rolled out as there, I wanna make sure that people who are actually teaching it understand what we're doing, why we're doing it. And I want them to be involved in the adoption of writing this. It, I'm not saying that we aren't what to do, but I'll sort of count it, we make sure that, that we roll it out the proper way or we don't have to, especially with sensitive people who, you know, the community or household, household, have a bit of knowledge about sexual things.
I, I appreciate this comment. I guess I like the call up, like I was, do you have a kind of projection as to where we might be looking for a second semester this year or be not to the next school year? Not, we got this one on time, I'm just curious if you're, if you got that sort of, Miles?
No, I think that's something that Helen and I, we started working on. I do know that right now the priority of the, of, 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 of that. I know that, you know, speaking of, you talked about this earlier, through the second semester, uh, I imagine there's sort of a progress, but it's, it's on the negative side of the system.
And I appreciate that. And just one last thing. We have school personnel on this committee, so I would assume it's the people that are all good, uh, teaching, because I would, um, so don't remember if it's a phase or not a phase, because I would think that they're, based on what's going on. I still, I think it's just going back to, uh, I think it's, I'm. Let me just ask, are there any, um, community or or staff members who serve on the SHAC committee? If I could just ask them just to stand up for a moment to thank them?
A lot of groundwork has been laid, I can, I can assure you as far as, as our process goes. So I do think that when we sit down to start working on this, it's, we have a lot laid in place here. I feel very comfortable about that.
I'm gonna need a bed to sleep in tonight, so if anybody has a neck of bed, I can, my couch is really small, I'm already seeing my wife's size on the couch. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Check.
Okay. We're gonna now continue with the rest of the agenda and finish up through here. I'm sorry, guys, I know you have a meeting right behind this. We're gonna try to do this real quickly. Okay, on, under number two, governance reports, consideration, we did have an item for individual action, and it's the consideration of naming of Tassie High School football, softball field. If I could have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second, okay. Discussion, Mr. President?
Yes, uh, you know, this is, this is one of those things that, that we as a board cannot take lightly. Anytime you're naming a facility, it's a permanent, a permanent thing. And, um, you know, you look at multiple things, you look at time, you look at, uh, what they've done in the community, you look at how they've affected children, uh, because that's our, that's our end product. That's our end goal is how they, how they have affected children. Uh, this coach, uh, I was, I'm, I was gonna say, I was unfortunate that I attended the funeral because it was such an early event in this young man's life. And what I experienced there and the outpouring of community support and kids, that is one of the biggest funerals I've attended and I bet you sixty percent or more of the attendees were kids. Kids that he has touched their life in some form or fashion. His tenure at our school district, um, was not long granted, but his impact on our community and the students that we serve has been there for over twenty years. And his service to our community was in the field of softball. And as a high school coach, as a club coach, uh, multiple high schools, multiple kids. And, uh, I felt the need just to let everyone know that, that I strongly, strongly support this. There may be other situations that I wouldn't be as strong, uh, in supporting the naming rights of a, of a facility, but in a case like this and the tenure in the community, not just with our school, but in the community and the amount of student lives that kids touch, uh, I just felt the need just to, to put that out there and, uh, to add some more validity to what we're about to go.
Second. Any other comments? We have a motion at the second. All those favor. Okay, next, under section three, financial services and reports, we have amended wide budgetary amendments.
So moved.
Second.
The only reason I pulled this one, I would not have pulled it if I didn't have anything else. Well, thank you, Mr. Neil, the way you had the budget and you set up little notes, it's really easy to follow. And, and I know we requested a bit six months ago, I guess, and done that. Just wanted to, when looking through this, it made it easy to follow it and I appreciate it. Just feel a few more. Thank you.
That's right, Doc. It's a good reason for something. Okay, that's it. Second. All the favor. And, uh, yeah, takes us to the end of our, then on action items, compelled to ask this, if we have any future work visits, if anyone, maybe, would like to, is there a word to get off, so to speak, for the next one?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I want to have, uh, something, but I, I would like to ask from the building and planning committee, I appreciate the information on sale. How about, uh, something with the summer project, uh, list of what's going on, north, southwest, where's our, our activity at? I, I might get that.
I'm just worried about the ground, that.
Everywhere, everywhere. Chillers here and chillers there and roofs. I just like to see a list, yeah, just like.
Can we, can we, just kind of?
That's it.
Okay. For that, is there something else? Well, it's adjourned. You're free.